This conference will now be recorded. This conference will now be recorded.
All right. Good evening and welcome to the Elkhina City Council Meeting of July 6th, 2020. Call the roll, please.
Councilwoman Hess here. Mayor Potem Johnson.
Here.
Councilman Noah.
Here.
Councilman Mitchell.
Here.
And Mayor Waldeora.
Here. Please rise for the lights.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Any modifications to the agenda this evening? We will vote to approve. Okay, that's a little new for us, so I'll try to remember to do that. Do you need a motion on that as well, I suppose?
Yes.
And we approve these, Jim.
Second.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hess?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
And Mayor Waldeora?
Hi.
All right, thank you. Approval of the minutes, regular session of June 15th, 2020. Any issues or changes? Citizens appearing before council on agenda and non-agenda items are allowed five minutes to address your concerns. It's the only time during the council meeting that they're allowed to address council. If you'd like to do so, please come to the podium and state your name and address for our records. Are we also taking anything on the beat?
We can't, but there's nothing.
Because we're also live meeting this, as we were at a go-to meeting, so if there's anyone out there, no one here. Okay, we'll move on. Excuse me. There's no public hearing. The consent agenda this evening is A is bills to be allowed in the amount of $892,487.24. B is a security improvement budget amendment increase of $29,443 in the general fund. C is a noise variance for Joe Bauer for judge committee fundraising event on July 17th, 2020, from 6:00 PM till 10:00 PM. D is a noise variance for Joe's bar on July 18th, 2020, from 9:00 PM to midnight. E is budget amendment request for fiscal year '21 increase of $4,075 to the equipment fund for retiree healthcare. And F is services agreements for fiscal year '21. I move we approve the consent agenda presented.
For.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hess?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Johnson?
Yes.
And Mayor Waldeora?
Hi.
I wish I could.
Thank you. Next up is presentations. The first one is here at the Humane Society Semiannual Report. And Mary Iguiz is here for that.
Can I remove this as I'm speaking?
Yes, please.
Thank you very much. First of all, thank you for having me here tonight and for hosting awesome member from here on the Humane Society. We're thrilled to be here. And we are very happy that City Hall has reinstated, opened and reinstated meet and greet events for the here on Humane Society. My dad was here paying taxes, I think, last week and was amused watching people trying to find a kitten. I think that was
Oh, yeah.
Looking, yeah. It was pretty good. I enjoyed that. He enjoyed it. You don't get that in a big city, so it's a hometown touch. The city's support of Elkhina County's only full-service no-kill animal shelter is important and really underlines the city's commitment to responsible, healthy pet ownership and humane treatment of animals. And we certainly applaud you for that. Statistics from the here on Humane Society this year so far have been really, really good. We've had 266 felines and canine. They've been guests of the here on Humane Society thus far. And you'll see in your packets, there's a breakdown of all of that for comparison's sake over the same time period last year. HHS had taken in 250 animals, so we're up a little bit. And the outcomes have also been really, really good. 235 adoptions so far this year. We had 200 last year at this time, so both intake and adoptions are both up. So we're really proud of that. It's a lot of hard work, and especially during the pandemic, that we have by appointment-only adoptions. It's really encouraging to see that people are willing to take those extra steps and still willing to come out to the shelter and go through our protocol to adopt animals. We've had a lot of improvements to the here on Humane Society over the past six months. An ultrasound machine for the animal's health has been purchased through fundraising from a grant through the community foundation from Northeast Michigan. We bought a centrifuge, which will aid our vet tech in doing in-house testing, which will save us money. We have all stainless steel kennels that have been put on wheels, getting them off the floor, which is healthier and also mobile. The shelter passed its recent state inspection with flying colors. The state inspector said that she was amazed at what the shelter looked and smelled like, so we wanted to invite everybody out to see the improvements. If you haven't been there in the past year, two, three, boy, you will be surprised. It's a pleasant place to visit. We've had to do some innovative fundraising because we couldn't do our two biggest fundraisers of the year. So we've had a bottle drive that's been very, very successful, a drive-up kitten shower. We did pet portraits. Mayor, I think you had your pets' portrait done. Did you draw one as well?
I could, no.
No? All right, well, Mayor Potem Johnson did, so that was pretty cool. We crowd sourced treatment for disabled and ill animals. People have been very, very generous. We secured a paycheck protection program loan from the Small Business Administration, which really helped us keep our doors open. That was vital. We participated in multiple Bissell Pet Foundation events, all of which resulted in subsidized adoptions for people and pets in our area. We have a pet food pantry, so that citizens, especially during this time when a lot of people are out of work, if they need food to feed their animals, if we have it, we will give it to them. So that's been something that has been nice to see people using. We have gotten new interior doors in the shelter. We continue our partnership with Petsmart, and we've painted lots of interior spaces. Statistics, though, don't tell the whole story of the here on Humane Society. The real accomplishments come from saving animals that others would and have thrown away. We just welcomed a dog brought in with mange and an accompanying severe skin infection. This dog looked like a burn victim. And we took him in, we got him veterinary care, and he's doing well. It turns out he's going to be a ginger. He's growing his fur back, so that's exciting. We accepted two dogs from Midland who were displaced because of flooding. So again, if we can help, if we can be of service to others, we really readily accept that challenge. And we've had several animals come to the shelter with severe deformities. Last year it was eye infections. This year it's limb deformities. And I really want to tell you about one of them and the impact that she's had on HHS and one Elkhina family. Sassy is a Chihuahua mix. She arrived at the here on Humane Society in rough shape. She was just six weeks old. That's too soon for her to be away from her mother. Her owners claimed that she had been stepped on by her mother, and that was too much for them to handle when it came to her care, so we took her in. A visit to a veterinarian told a different story, though. Sassy was diagnosed with a congenital birth defect that left her hip joints unattached to her pelvis, and her knees and her front legs were disjointed, and her condition was considered great. And we're a bunch of softies at the here on Humane Society, so we really wanted to do whatever we could to give her a good life for as long as she had it. So Sassy didn't seem to realize that she was different. She pulled herself around with her front legs and used her paralyzed back legs, kind of like a rudder. Well, at least one veterinarian recommended euthanizing her. Our office manager, Caitlin, wanted a second opinion. So Caitlin is a part-time employee at HHS and a full-time student at Michigan State University, where she's studying to be a veterinarian. She used her connections to get Sassy an appointment at NSU Veterinary Hospital. Then the coronavirus pandemic hit. The appointment would be indefinitely delayed as veterinary care providers navigated best practices and emergency orders from the governor. In the meantime, Sassy needed a way to get around, and HHS knew just the person to help. Andrew Pad, instructor of manufacturing technologies in Millwright at ACC, is an animal lover, and he enjoys presenting challenges to his students. So he eagerly offered to help create a custom-fitted wheelchair for Sassy, with whom he quickly fell in love upon meeting her at HHS, which sits on ACC property inside the city limits. We still don't have a paid route, by the way. Anyway. Just saying.
Just saying.
Just saying. All right. So anyway, this is just down the street from Andrew's classroom at Beston Temple Center. So Sassy, Caitlin, and HHS President Cindy Johnson visited ACC right before the lockdown to get Sassy fitted for her new wheels. The day Sassy arrived, ACC Auto Service Repair Instructor Justin Rule was visiting ACC with his family for another kind of wheelchair fitting. His six-year-old daughter is paralyzed from the waist down, and that is a complicated and rare form of childhood onset epilepsy. Auto lab students have been refurbishing her electric wheelchair as a class project, and she was there that day to test out her improved ride. Dustin had learned about Sassy from Andrew, when the latter instructor visited the auto lab in search of specialized bolts for the wheelchair that he was building for Sassy. When Andrew mentioned that Sassy would be coming in to test her wheelchair the same day, Dustin's daughter would be there. Dustin knew that the two special little girls needed to meet. So Sassy supporters from HHS and ACC watched as Andrew and his student Peter patiently and methodically made adjustments to the wheelchair and harness holding Sassy in place, so the puppy's twisted back legs were lifted off the ground and her front paws didn't have too much weight to support. Seeing the tiny puppy struggle to figure out how to move in this strange new contraption touched Dustin and his family deeply. He said, quote, "Having a daughter who is disabled from the waist down and is fighting a miserable battle with this disease, our family has over six years of background caring for a special needs individual. I understood the pain the dog was contending with, and my heart immediately went out to her when I heard that they were having a hard time finding her a home." This deed was planted for Sassy to join the Rule family, and Dustin filled out an application to adopt the puppy. HHS had wanted Sassy in our care until we learned what her prognosis was from Michigan State, but after non-emergency veterinary visits and procedures were suspended by the governor's emergency powers, HHS made the difficult decision that Sassy really should go to her forever home instead of just waiting in purgatory, kind of, in a foster home. So according to Dusty, Sassy and his daughter are best of friends now. The puppy has settled right in at the Rule home. He said, quote, "My daughter and Sassy immediately fell in love her first day home. My daughter already has taught Sassy to play tug-of-war and fetch. When it's time for bed, Sassy has to be put at the foot of my daughter's bed, and if I don't get Sassy up in bed with her quickly enough, I immediately catch flak from both of them. This also may play another lifesaving advantage for my daughter." He said that many dogs eventually start to pick up on seizure activity from their family members, and Sassy may one day be able to warn them of nighttime seizures towards their daughter if the equipment fails. So as for Sassy's physical issues, the Rules are committed to helping her live the best life possible. That was something that was really important to us at the here on Humane Society. He said, "Her physical limitations don't worry me as much as they did when she was a young pup. She's been getting stronger and adapting to her disability. When Michigan State begins accepting non-emergency care once again, we will be taking her down there to see if there's anything more that they can do for her. And until then, though, Sassy is tooling around in her custom ACC wheelchair courtesy of Andrew Pad and his student Peter. Pressure has been taken off of her joints, and she's able to explore the world around her, just like any other puppy would be eager to do. And the Rules have discovered that Sassy is incredibly resilient despite her fragile-looking exterior. And that is exactly what the here on Humane Society is all about. So we thank you very much for your support, and we continue to look forward to our partnership with you. We meet and greets, and it's been a pleasure. Any questions? Come out to the shelter, really. It's a great thing to do. We'd love to host you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Receiving five, please. I move we receive a five.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hess?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
And Mayor Waldeora?
Hi.
Wish I could.
All right, thank you. Next up is the county ambulance millage. Chief Orbus is here. The bar is set pretty high, my friend.
I don't think I can follow that.
What you've got?
But I'll do my best. Definitely can't follow that. Speech could help me with my PowerPoint. It'll begin from the outside here someplace. And what I'd like to do with my book is let us take a few minutes, talk a little bit about the county ambulance knowledge and how important it is for merely not only the city of Elkhina, but the whole Elkhina, greater Elkhina community. I've been doing the same presentation every place that I get an opportunity, but there aren't a lot of opportunities now with COVID, because most places aren't meeting, and they can't get to the Lions Club. Oh, I did the Lions Club, but I can't get to the Exchange and the Rotary and so forth, because nobody's doing in-person meetings. But very, very shortly, coming up August 4th, is our renewal and increase in the Elkhina County Ambulance Millage that provides us with countywide advanced life support, emergency ambulance service. Next slide, please. During our talk, we'll be observing our six-foot social distancing and using masks when appropriate. Next. The millage this time is just a little bit different than it has been in the past. It's a 1.5-mill new millage for four years. The one-mill millage that has been in place for 40 years will expire. Rather than renew it at one mill and then ask for another half, we simply let it sunset and go for the one and a half, because that truly is what is necessary at this point. And we're going to talk about why that is. Next. The history of ambulance service here in Elkhina is interesting and something that we should be proud of as a community. It was once provided by a local private service. However, they were found to be unreliable and have a very low level of care. Commissioner McRoberts, Elkhina County-sponsored meeting that I spoke at, talked of, spoke of a accident in which the city was responding and the ambulance service was responding, and they were on the radio, and the private service wanted to take dibs on which bodies they got. Rather macabre, kind of a situation, but that was very early in the days of EMS, prior to 1980. The county millage, 1.0 mill, was established in 1980, over 40 years ago, and shortly thereafter, local first responders were established in most communities, including the city of Elkhina. Through an interlocal agreement with the city in 1980, we took over that service and have been providing the service ever since, both to the city and to the entire county as well. The millage has never seen an increase at all in that 40-year period until now. But to give an example of the differences, in 1980, an ambulance vehicle cost about $40,000 without any equipment in it. Now it costs $200,000 if we can get one on sale, as you well know from the last few that we've had to purchase. So it's very, very difficult to maintain personnel costs, equipment costs, vehicle costs, everything else with 40 years of inflation unchecked. Next. I would like to mention briefly the different training hours required by EMS level, because there's some confusion out in the community, and we want people to understand what kind of EMS providers they're dealing with. The baseline or foundational level of EMS training is the medical first responder at 70 hours. And that's what our first response volunteers are in the outlying areas. All your volunteer fire departments have medical first responders. Elkhina Township has some EMTs as well. And in fact, that brings us to our next level, EMT at 250 hours. EMT could provide basic life support ambulances. Elkhina doesn't have any basic life support ambulances, but there are some others in the area. Most of the time, BLS does transfers. An intermediate EMT specialist for advanced EMT, same level as 386 hours, is an EMT with another 136 hours of specialized training. We don't have any limited advance services in Northeast Michigan here. But at the top of the scale, at 1,400 hours, is a paramedic. Paramedics are extremely rare, hence our three open positions at the moment. Takes about two years to complete, usually ending in an associate's degree. Many of our people went on and got their bachelor's as well. But it is the high end of the scale. It's very important to note that not all ambulances are alike. Many times, people mistake ambulance vehicles, which are no longer ambulances, they're usually our former ambulances that are being used in first response services around the area. Or in Elkhina Township, they provide patient transfer services on a BLS level, and so they actually have new ambulances there. One of the things that's very important to keep in mind is that Elkhina Township responds to medical emergencies with basic life support ambulances, but they do not transport. All patients in Elkhina County are treated and transported by Elkhina County paramedics. Therefore, the millage is important in every community. There is no other service transporting patients in Elkhina County. Next. This gives you just a basic idea. I think I'm preaching to the choir. You know the budget probably as well as I do, but the city terminal fund supplies about 34% of the sustenance, if you will, of Elkhina Fire EMS. There's some very small pieces. 1% is the press field management contract, which is probably in its last year. The Echo Program is about 1%. The county first responder stipend, when there was one, was about 1.5%, but that's been eliminated. We're hoping to get it back through this millage. The county ambulance contract currently is about 20% of our total operating cost, and about 45% is provided by ambulance billing, not only for emergency calls throughout the county, but also the long-distance transfer program. So it's important to note that we are a county entity, a city entity, enterprise operation. We're all things to all people to get the job done, and that's how you run an operation of this size and complexity in a community of this size. We're truly unique. Next. This shows our responses in 2010 through 2018. As you can see, we've gone up from about 2,500 when I started here to about 5,000 every year now. So the need for emergency ambulance and advanced life support ambulance has certainly increased, and that isn't all transfers, that's also emergency service, but certainly much busier than we've been in the past. In my former life, I was a fire chief downstate, and I had a community of six square miles and 31,000 residents. So the number of people in Elkhina County, but the size of half of the city of Elkhina, and we ran about 2,500 calls in metro Detroit. So you can see the difference here. It's quite an interesting comparison here in Elkhina. Next. Once again, all Elkhina County emergency patients, including those in Elkhina Township, are treated and transported by our paramedics. Everybody in Elkhina County gets an advanced life support response. Next. All Elkhina County residents receive a $200 discount, as you know from our budget against co-pays deductibles. If uninsured, it's $200 off the total charge, but what that is designed to do is assure that in an emergency call, most people won't get a bill. Their insurance will get a bill, but they won't get a bill, and a lot of pocket expenses. On transfers, particularly long-distance transfers, that is not the case, because CMS and Blue Cross don't allow us to discount those services. But emergency services, we really wanted to offset as much as we possibly could, so that no one has ever disincentivized the call. I still hear these awful stories from people. I talked to somebody on Facebook the other day that had had a medical emergency and didn't call 911 because they were afraid they'd get a huge bill. They had heard that. No, you won't get a huge bill. If you need help, for heaven's sakes, call us. That's why we're there. Next. Our current ambulance fleet of $200,000 ambulances is being well-used. Our oldest county rig is 101, which is a 2012 with 180,000 miles on it. 102 is a 2015 with 140,000. 103 is our newest. It's only got, well, it's probably got 20,000 now, but 13 when I made the slide. 104 with 170,000 or so. And then we have three city-owned vehicles. The old, the original Mikey, blue and white, the only one that doesn't match, is a 2009 body with a 2018 chassis on it, 331 combined miles and going very, very strong. You see that all the time. 108 is probably retired this year. It's the oldest transporting ambulance in the state of Michigan with only 61,000 miles. It started out as a city-county rig, and then it went to Sandborne as a rescue, and we bought it back from Sandborne as a backup. We've kept it ever since. You know what? It always starts and it always goes, but it's getting kind of hard to repair now. It's real. And then 109 is our newer mobile intensive care unit. We purchased that, as you know, in 2017. It has pushed on, pushed 200,000 miles at this point, and all of the rigs are now interchangeable. So if a county rig is down, we have one county rig down now. The blue and white 105 is calling 911 calls throughout the county. By the same token, if we had an emergency transfer and the transfer rig was down, we could use a different rig in the fleet, but that way we can most efficiently work throughout the system. Next. Now, there's two different missions to the millage. The first is the primary one-mill. And in the beginning, in 1980, the one-mill was intended to all go to provide ambulance service, period. At that point, I think it was limited advance before even paramedics were out there. But in that first mill, that supports three advanced life support ambulances, staff and immediately available 24/7 right now. Now, that's hard to do, because as calls come in, that three changes. It's not just the first three. The first unit goes out, okay, we can handle that. The second unit goes out, we call in two people and staff another ambulance. The third unit goes out, we call in two more people, staff another ambulance. So we try to always keep three available immediately out the door. The contract calls for one additional ALS ambulance with call-in personnel, but in actuality, we routinely provide five and six and even seven ambulances when needed due to emergencies. We also provide EMS continuing education at Elkhina Fire for the local surrounding services, so we provide that service for them. That's part of the contract. We provide EMS protocol training on-site upon request, so when the protocols change and the volunteers need to be updated, we send our medics out to their station and update them. Same thing with high-performance CPR training and on-scene EMS supply replenishment. You're on an accident on 32, use three seat collars and a bunch of bandages in the back ward. We give them back whatever they needed that they used off the ambulance, and then we restock when we get back. Very important, because small first responders don't have a backup system, so we're their backup. Next. The additional point five has some very significant needs. First off, it responds first responders cross-sharing with locals. Prior to the last economic downturn, when there were still first responder fees, each community in Elkhina County got first responder fees to help them to be able to field that service, and it was based on the run volume in that community. So Elkhina City did get some, Elkhina Township got some. Sandborne and Wilson are the two next busiest, and so they got the next tier. And then the lower tier went to the smaller communities, don't do a whole lot of runs, but still need help providing that service. We really count on those first responders. A, to get there quicker, especially in the far-out rural areas, and B, they help to support us not only in a quicker response, but quicker information on what's going on with the patient, and then supporting us moving furniture out of the living room so we get a stretcher and, you know, snow shovel in the deck so that we can get across to the door, those kinds of things, dealing with the other family members. If there's other people that are upset, as they frequently are, first responders can be a huge help with that. But they're funding that all on their own at this point, and that's a problem. It was designed, it was supposed to help them, and that kind of went away while we ran out of money. So the 25-mill will help with that. It'll restore a biannual ambulance replacement cycle. We keep falling further behind. We need one every other year to keep them all new enough that they're reliable in a moment's notice. When we get to three years, four years in between, the oldest ones get pretty ragged. We used to turn them over to first responder agencies when we were done with them, and as the run volume was improved, we run the wheels off, and there's not much to turn over when they're done. But if we got back to an every-two-year cycle, that could happen again. First responder disposable supplies is something that the city has been covering that will be part of the millage if it passes, and I'm sure it will. ALS medication box fees, the county's already covering, but they can't afford to out of that first mill. Out of the second, 25 will be able to do that. Another area that we're looking forward to doing is medical first responder initial education for new volunteers. Recruiting and retention of volunteers is becoming extremely difficult, just as it is for full-time people. And so if a volunteer comes to your local volunteer fire department and says, "Gosh, I want to be involved. Send me to first responder school." Currently, we can only do that about every other year until we have enough of them to make it a class financially feasible. We can't lose money on it. We don't make money on it, but we can't lose money on it either. And it takes 12 students essentially to make an MFR class, oh, with the cost of the instructors and so forth. What we're going to do with this 25, if this comes through, is we're going to do one every year regardless of enrollment. So it doesn't matter if it loses money, because it's being paid for by the millage, and the result will be more first responders, because you can get those people in school right now while they're still, you know, excited about it and ready to go. So that'll be a huge help. The other thing this 25-mill is going to do is complete the 800 megahertz migration for first responders and fire departments.[1748.61] As you recall, several years ago, law enforcement went to 800 megahertz. The city went 800 megahertz shortly thereafter, city fire. But the other fire departments throughout the area have not. And one of the reasons is because the system can't support paging, which is necessary for volunteer services particularly. The county is in the process of migrating and then they'll have to sustain that technology because the VHF system has become completely unreliable and barely usable. So this will allow us to move the volunteers over and to sustain the system during this initial four-year 1.5 mil milletage. And the last thing is that it pays for automatic fire scene medical standby. We do that right now, but an awful lot of what we do now is provided by the city because the city wants to help people. And we'll still do that, but wouldn't it be nice if that was covered by the cost of running the countywide service? So that'll be covered as well. Next.
I have a question, Chief.
Sure.
I already know the answer to this, but I just kind of want everybody else to hear it. So right now, we collect the milletage and then everything that we collect is turned over to the county. If it increases, they're going to receive more. Does that mean that the 760,000 is going to increase?
Yes. The intent is that the first mil of the milletage will go to the city to provide ambulance service. That's the way it always was supposed to be. And it will be that way again, but the mil is more than 760,000. So it will allow us to pay for our personnel costs and other costs at which we're getting behind the curve. The second .5 mil will cover those additional things that were out of our chunk. So it's very important to keep in mind, in this case, one mil will always be the cost of providing the base service. The additional .5 is where all the extras will come in. And together as a system, we can run the system effectively. We just can't, at this point, pay the people and buy the ambulances and operate the service with the extras on the money that one mil brings in. In 40 years, things have changed a bit. We just can't do it. I would like to note that we're a 2018 recipient of the Excellence in Firebase EMS Award. The reason I point that out is that it's a Washington DC-based congressional award that showcases Alpena as one of the premier EMS services in the entire nation. And I want our folks to know that because if we come 40 years later and want just a little bit more money to get the job done, it's money well spent. Next. We do have a community committee that has been created because, of course, as a public entity, we can't campaign, so I'm not going to tell anybody how to vote. But the Citizens for a Safe Alpena County on Blair Street is going to educate our voters as well as they could. And this is a postcard mailing that they recently sent out throughout the area. I'm not on the committee. None of our people are involved and some of our retirees are. But people from the community think that this is very important. The next mailer will have Mr. McGuire on it, one of our saves from a few years ago. You may have met him at the junior high. He went down on cardiac arrest, was successfully saved by our county EMS system and is more than happy to share that story with other people. So when you see that, be proud. That's the system we built. Our union is supporting this very heavily and we certainly appreciate their help because the stability of the entire system is based on this milletage. If this milletage doesn't happen, the system becomes unstable and really we don't have the safety net that we've always had in our community. Next. Next, there we go. And so in conclusion, just educating folks, August 4th, there will be an ambulance milletage on the ballot, 1.5 mil. I personally would be happy to answer anyone's questions. I've been doing that on social media to the degree that I could and I'm always available at 354, 1840. I'd love to come talk to your group, your church, your civic group, anybody. I'd love to come talk to you and answer any questions you might have. And for council, is there anything I can tell you?
I've covered it all.
Thank you very much. We very much appreciate the support of council. The system was originally designed to be half and half. In fact, there used to be a true-up at the end of every year, that half of the cost of the ambulance service was formed by the county and half was formed by the city. But you can imagine that the milletage shouldn't go up for 40 years. Eventually, the city got a little bit deeper part of it. Fortunately, because of our billing, we've been able to offset a lot of that. But this milletage will help us to put it back to a more equal and equitable partnership between the entities. And I think that the city and county have been wonderful partners for many, many years now. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Next up is announcements. Absentee ballots for the August 4th, 2020 state primary election are available in the clerk's office. Anything to add, Cliff Zog?
We have been, we have been getting a lot of requests. We've issued over 1,400 absentee ballots. We have about 8,400 registered voters in the city, so that's a huge chunk already. But we're getting them out as soon as possible.
Excellent.
All right, we're all the way down to new business, community impact grant application. Jeff is here.
I'd like to fill out a grant, please. That's it. Northeast Michigan Community Foundation recently announced it's accepting applications for the 2020 summer cycle of the Community Impact Grant. The city of Alpena is a qualifying entity. Fund is being used for a variety of projects. The maximum request amount for the grant is $5,000 and the application deadline is quickly approaching at July 15th, so not a lot of time. For quite some time, I've been looking at radar signs, as you are aware, we recently put in, back in like March, they put in a grant application for radar trailer. And that's still, in fact, I emailed today trying to find the status of that because it was still in terms of the code of 1991 or something else. But whether or not that grant is approved, I think this would be a project of a portable speed radars signs would be something that would augment that or maybe should be major delays depending on that goes. But they are their portable sign. We're looking at about one right now, usually 12 or 13 inches in size. Solar powered and they would have fixed to an existing like a speed sign pole. So it'll hit the speed limit and then the sign would come down and say your speed is this. And if you're going too fast, it'll say please slow down or other stuff we get programmed to say. Can't tell why I might.
Has to be approved.
Yeah. So that's a project I'm looking to hopefully fund with this grant money if approved. They have, they have proven to be very effective of notifying drivers that, you know, they're going too fast and they can even be programmed to say thank you if you're going the proper speed, which is nice. And it serves as a force multiplier for our department personnel, so it frees us up. With the program I'm looking at right now, we're going to stay away from the internet, the wifi ones that will give us real time alerts. That was one of the benefits for the trailer. But we find that those, the cost for that and the recurring cost can be kind of high. And so with these, we can go every, you know, two weeks or 30 days and we can just download the information and we can look at patterns to see how many vehicles have passed by with the average speed. So there is software that's pretty reasonable that will allow us to do that. But anyway, like I said, I have attached a blank application with the memo here. It's pretty straightforward. The only thing, the only question I had about it, and this is something for good and all over tonight, who was on 3B, and it says, if your project can only be awarded partial funding, will your project still move forward? And the only issue I had with that is that this is a, was a unbudgeted project. And so more likely when I, if I'm allowed to fill out the grant application, I can probably scare a couple thousand dollars or like forfeiture funds to put towards a project. So I'm not going to ask for anything from the general fund for this. We don't, if we, you know, we can't find the money, then we won't accept the grant funds. If it's on partial, if I can't find money elsewhere. So just let you know about that and become and ask and beg and for money. But with that said, July 15th is the application deadline. It should take about an hour to fill it out. I'd like your blessing to move forward.
I'd say no reason not to.
Yeah, it's very good.
For that amount, how many signs could you get to them?
Two, they're pricey. I mean, surprisingly expensive. The vendors that I'm looking at right now, one of the quotes I got back was about $47. Another vendor came back about $4,000, but I'm still going through the estimates, making sure I'm kind of doing apples to apples because a lot will offer this and not that. So I want to make sure I'm kind of getting the same thing. But I'd say the average is probably about $4,500. So they're very sturdy, they're tamper resistant. And they will actually notify us if somebody's messing around with the signs, that type of thing. But I'd like to get one out right from the police station, frankly, for a while, see how that works.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I get a couple calls. You know where I'm talking.
I do.
Another question. Do they, they collect data and speeds and do they take video or is it just?
The trailer unit that we're looking at will take a snapshot of the photos. This one will not. There are some vendors that do offer cameras. They also offer light, it's called ALP, Automatic License Plate Photo. We might look at that down the.
I always wonder what the capability of this one is more to monitor speed and let people know what they're doing.
Exactly. Exactly right. It's going to say, you know, you're in a school zone, slow down type of thing. That's a bit more basic.
So we need to.
Yeah. Please.
I move that we move to Jeff to wipe the community background for a speed sign.
Check it.
Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hess?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
And Mayor Waldo?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Chief. I move we adjourn to close session.
Could I, could I just, I'm sorry, it was kind of new business, but I know I've already pet my variants this past, I'm sorry. A quick official session. Maybe it's new business. It entails involving variants.
What variants, your variant?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
For future reference, come up during, during the public comment at the beginning. But since you came all this way and sat through all this.
Thank you, thank you. If I may.
Please.
Thank you. And I wore this mask, it happens very much. But thank you. I'll be quick. I just want to take this opportunity, I agree with Chief, both chiefs, that it's been difficult to get out in this time. As you may or may not know, I'm running for 26th Circuit Judge.
Wait, name and address for records.
Joel Bauer, 327 South State Avenue.
Thank you, sir.
I wanted to take this opportunity to just briefly address the council. Thank you very much for all that you do. It's been a tough, tough job lately and I know you guys will do a nice job. So I appreciate that very much. We were all invited to the fundraiser. However, I'm here to advise council that we are tending to matter. Given the state of this pandemic and the ridiculousness of the spread of this disease and this virus, we can't good conscience go forward and even risk one person spreading that to the people that we care about. So thank you. We appreciate the approval of variants and perhaps we'll have it some other, some other time. So that being said, that was all my new business. Did want to take a chance to just hand out my. No shame, no shame, that's right. Like I said, this is all, the only time I get to politics. Thank you very much for everything that you're doing. Thank you, thank you. Especially Spartan Corner over here in Alpena. Thank you all very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I would pick the love year that we can be in a parade to politics and see people now. It's crazy. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, bud. I move we adjourn to close session. To discuss collective agreements and attorney-client consultation regarding Alpena Bio.
Councilman Noah?
Yes.
Mayor Proton Johnson?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hess?
Yes.
Councilman Mitchell?
Yes.
And Mayor Waldo?
Aye.